Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to call up Carrie Zimmerman, who's going to lead us through a presentation on the Zimmerman Agency. As you know, we have been contracted with Zimmerman for some time now. It's been a very productive relationship at this point. We wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to see how productive it's been. And with that being said, Carrie?
Thank you very much. Give us five seconds. We're switching this over real quick. How was that? That was under five seconds. Again, my name's Carrie Zimmerman. I've met many of you. Thank you very much for having us here today. In a brief amount of time, we want to just catch you up with -- can we leave them up? I just don't want anybody falling asleep late in the afternoon. We've got two spots where we'll turn it down. I know you can't see it super well, but I bet y'all stay awake and see it as well. So if it becomes too difficult to look at, let me know, and we're happy to turn the lights down for you all the way. Again, first off, I just want to, in a brief amount of time, I want to be able to touch base with you on just a tiny bit about who we are, what we've been up to, what we've been working on, and what we've got planned for the future. Interrupt if you'd like, or you can save all your questions to the end. It gets a lot of work to try to squeeze into about a 15-minute time period. Hopefully, we'll be able to successfully do that. Again, I think the biggest point, Richard, you can go ahead, is that you've hired us to be not just your market, not just an advertising agency. We don't really do anymore just advertising for anyone, but that we're about strategy. We really want to take you from a branding perspective that's a synergy of advertising and public relations and digital. And I cannot emphasize that enough. I think if you look at some of these numbers on this next slide, and again, it's meant to just kind of -- Richard? You're going to have to keep up with me now. You know I go fast. But again, all told, the Zimmerman Agency has 162 employees that are all full-time. We burn about $150 million a year in billing. If you extrapolate the public relations discipline out of -- Richard? You can just go ahead and put all those up. If you want to extrapolate the PR portion of the agency, we're the largest PR firm in the state of Florida. And actually, within an advertising agency, we're the largest PR firm in our entire country. Our advertising agency is the third-largest in Florida. Our digital division, which nowadays you can hardly do anything without having a very big, strong digital, that's like your social, your Facebook, website development, et cetera, and we have over 30 people in that department also. So that makes us the largest digital division of anywhere in the southeast. So again, if you look at what we do, it's not only just branding, but doing the activation of the branding and the marketing. And I've got just a sampling up here real quick. If you'll take a look at these logos, it doesn't nearly begin to touch on everybody that we work with by any means at all, but from strictly branding, we handle the entire countries of the Bahamas, the British Virgin Islands, and Aruba. And in those instances, we do everything from tourism to economic development for them. So again, all those different marketing components come together to do that. We handle entire brands like Party City and Firehouse Club, Subs, and Amtrak. Funny story about Amtrak. When we got that piece of business, we were the only people in the country that got down to the final five that don't actually have Amtrak in their city. So it was kind of hard to convince them why we should be doing Amtrak when we've never actually been able to get on Amtrak out of Tallahassee, Florida. Again, famous brands such as Athlon, give us not only the sense of what you need to do to really be good at branding, but then more importantly, how you activate that. So again, that's really just us in a snapshot. But if we look at, just real quick, and then Richard Long and John Nicholas are going to take you through some of this other work, but I cannot emphasize enough that if -- it's not up here, but I'm just going to walk you through it. Our primary objectives are to attract corporations and businesses to relocate to the area, make sure we're recruiting higher-wage companies. It's not about just getting any kind of companies. It's about the right kind of companies, the right town, the right place, and people that are going to spend the type of money that can continue to give lift to the community. Also, making sure we're promoting capital investments. You know, a lot of times, without private capital investments, it doesn't matter. People have to know the dollars are there, and they're the ones in a lot of instances making those decisions. Expand the current businesses. Y'all have been doing a very good job of that, is how do you support your businesses? You've got all kinds of entities throughout Pensacola that help do that. But part of what our role and responsibility is to help any way we can to make sure your businesses grow and thrive that are already here. Also, make sure the downtown area where such an investment has been put into the community, that it continues to be vibrant and relevant, and that we continue to build the downtown, including people living there, as well as the downtown experience. And then also making sure that we increase the city-centered population density. You know, with everything that's been done downtown, and what's going on with the maritime, it's important that people not only just come to visit, but people want to live there also. And again, that also helps attract the right kind of companies that you want to bring to the Pensacola area. And then, of course, renovate, develop, redevelop. That's always core to any kind of economic development sensibility. And then just capture a larger share of the future. I can't emphasize that enough. When we first talked, we talked to a lot of relocation managers in all of our core cities. We've relocated 10 core cities that are our biggest competitors. So we looked at relocation people that specialize in this, and that work with corporations daily. We also talked to 50 different journalists in the key cities, in CNN, in USA Today, et cetera. And, you know, when we talked about who Pensacola is, basically, we have all kinds of charts and graphs on this, again, in this kind of time limit. We don't have the time to go through all that. But basically, no one had anything bad to say about Pensacola. They just didn't know anything about it. You know, they either knew somebody that grew up here, or knew about the colleges, or knew about an actor, actress that came from here. Everybody knew you're a golfer. But the fact of the matter is, they didn't have an idea from a brand perspective what this city was about. And if anything, they knew about the history. And history is a fabulous thing, but history can also smother you. And you can't live in your history. You've got to be able to take your history and make it relevant about where you want to go in the future. So learning from the people that we have to market to, whether it's the media or these relocation specialists, we understand that you kind of have a blank slate. And I can tell you, it's better to have a blank slate than a negative slate. So there weren't a lot of negatives about the community. It was just they didn't know, therefore, it wasn't in their consideration set. We polled them on whether the cities that you look for to be considered when you're talking to the companies that you're speaking to, and Pensacola was never even in on their list. So if you want to get on the list, we're the one that we're here, we want to get on the list. We want to be in their consideration set. We want to be one of the first ones that they look at and say, you know what? You're looking for a small town that has a big future and that will embrace you. We want to be on that list instead of not even one they consider. So we're going to take you through some of the initial branding. We did branding within the first 120 days, and we've already been pushing the marketing through it, and the branding is already in place. So Richard Long and, again, John Nicholas are going to take you through some of that.
Let's back up a little. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks, Carrie. Again, I'm going to walk you through, again, some of the work that we've completed so far at this point. And John's going to walk you through a little bit of our media rationale behind some of the media purchases that we've made. A lot of you probably have seen the new logo design. And again, as Carrie mentioned, we're not walking --
Yeah, we need to turn the lights down.
We're not walking completely away from the past, but again, we want to have a progressive feel and look to our new logo. The upside of Florida, which is our tagline, it came really out of the research that Carrie just talked about. Again, I'm talking to site-location managers, folks that are responsible for companies deciding to either move their businesses here or opening a new office or branch in a particular market. Really, is a two, is a really a kind of a double-sided meaning to upside of Florida. One, from the folks, believe it or not, that didn't really know exactly where Pensacola was. So the upside, sort of the upside part of Florida, kind of connects to that. The other part of that is that really, the reality is, a lot of the research showed, we have everything that people want. People just don't know that we have it. And we have it actually better here than most of the other places in Florida. So if you think about the upside of Florida, the things that people look for in Florida, reason they're relocating businesses in Florida, we have all those things. We just need to make sure that we're relating those in a positive way. Again, we're not working just for the city. A lot of the work we've done so far, including some of the things we've done for the city, includes the different city-owned entities. Pensacola Energy with a rebrand from ESP, the Port of Pensacola, Pensacola International Airport. We've also, again, see a logo design for the Neighborhood Services. We also then, just in the last few weeks, had a request from the Public Library to do a new logo for them as well that ties into our color and scheme with the rest of our brand. And actually, just last week, we also had another request from the Pensacola Police Department to do a logo for them, and that's currently getting finished up right now. Our ad campaign, and this is an ad campaign that's currently in production? Go ahead.
The, when we first did our due diligence, in just the city of Pensacola, we found over 20 different entities as far as your look. You know, and if you think about it, when you look about, the basics of branding is, every time you see a bottle of Coca-Cola, it looks alike. Every time, whether it's on the, where you're going to take your can out, whether it looks like they're advertising, the little things that they do where they ask you Q and As in the middle of a movie. Well, part of the most basic premise to begin with is, the city of Pensacola always looked different. No matter what you did, whether you were walking downtown, whether you were at the airport, whether you were at the port, you didn't look like the same place. So again, you'll see a lot more activation, you'll see advertising, but the first stop was to say, let's make more power out of the money that you do have to make sure there is a consistent look and feel to everything that you do, and what we're marketing looks the same every time we turn around. And so you could see if, you want to go back for a second? In the way that those logos look, they all look very similar so that you could get the sense and feel that you were always talking about the same place instead of, it doesn't matter. No matter what you were doing, it was a different place. The Pensacola looks the same, the watermark that comes up the word, if you look from the bottom up, you get a sense of water. Because again, your waterfront isn't just there for tourism, but people, when they decide to relocate their community into a different community, they want to make sure it's a great place to live and play, not just work for the people that come here. So that's why we took advantage of the things like your waterfront, et cetera. So we just want to emphasize, as you look at those, we didn't make every one of them exactly alike, but you can certainly tell that it all comes out of the same colorways. It all has the same mood and emotion combined with those.
Right. And again, as you start to see, again, some of the executions that we've finished for a lot of the different entities so far, you'll start to see that coordination between all of those. This is an example of one of the print ads, and there'll be a series of these print ads that'll be used for economic development. And the whole idea here is that we're taking, basically, success stories. People that have grown businesses here in town, the Clint Stooges of the world, people like that, the Julian McQueens of the world that have built businesses here. Obviously, we also get the mayor's testimony as well, because again, what those people told us in the research, they want to make sure that Pensacola is serious about business. They want to know that you're in the ballgame. So again, we need to have business owners tell their stories, but we also need for Pensacola itself, and again, through the mayor, to be able to tell that story, also about the commitment that Pensacola is making. This is the beginning. Again, we're working right now on a microsite that all of our marketing efforts will be driven to. This is underway right now, and as we start to gain a lot of the assets for this, this will be live. Right now, we're looking at probably somewhere towards the end of October, early November, to have this actually live. And the URL for this, as you can see down below, is wewantyouinpensacola.com. And you own that URL. Again, as we have these testimonials, it'll be both videos. There will be still shots that we take over the next couple of weeks. That'll actually be the fulcrum for around this microsite is focused. Tomorrow morning, we're presenting a more choreographed and a more choreographed version of what you're seeing here, which is a comprehensive wayfinding.
Actually, the colors are magnificent. It's not coming through the projector.
A little bit lighter than what you'll see if you look at the screen, but this is really a comprehensive wayfinding system. We're presenting this to the Downtown Improvement Board first thing tomorrow morning. What you're seeing here is just an example, again, of bringing that brand to life in and around the city as a wayfinding way. Consistency there, again, the same thing that Carrie mentioned, a lot of inconsistency now, if you look at the wayfinding system, we want to bring that consistency and make sure that that brand is consistent through all those efforts downtown. Here's an example, you probably have seen this, which is an outdoor grill board for Pensacola Energy. And again, talking about the fact that we're basically the water heater connection or the experts that somebody needs to go to, again, if they're looking for a tankless water heater versus a more expensive electric water heater, we're the place to turn to. This is an example of a rebrand campaign that's just about to hit in about two weeks or so. Again, this speaks to, you know, sometimes to have a more powerful name, you need to rename yourself. We've got about seven or eight examples of this that'll be in ads. This is actually a copy of an insert that'll be in the Pensacola News Journal. Where you can see Morrison-Mooreson cross through, who became John Wayne. And there's lots of examples, again, we have of Prince, we have of Marilyn Monroe, who's Norma Jean Baker of these. And then if you flip this over, again, this will be a two-sided insert that'll be in the paper that really talks about the efficiency of natural gas versus electricity. An example of a, of our first ad that we're working on for the, for the port right now, and this is something we're working on directly with Claude and Amy at the port. This is going to the trade market, talking about heavy lift. And again, one thing, if you look through all the trade journals, if you have time to do that, the people that are actually in that business, all these, all their ads look the same. If you look at all the ports really across the southeast of Florida, they all have basically pictures of the port, they all show the same things. We want to make sure, again, that we're taking a different tact at this, and again, building around the things that the port offers to those people that offer heavy lift.
Can I unplug all this? Go back one.
Sure.
You're not seeing on the screen what this stuff really looks like. This screen does pretty well at capturing color, and that screen has no color. So I apologize that you're actually not seeing. If you can see over here, is there one on the other side? If you can see over there, you're getting a better instance than what you're seeing upon that screen, so.
Right. It's very, very vivid illustration, again, illustrating the fact of what actually happens on a day-to-day basis at the port. For Pensacola Airport, again, we've also initiated some efforts on their behalf. This is an example of an ad that's running actually in the Alabama Gulf Coast Visitor Guide. So these are people that are considering a trip down to Alabama's Gulf Coast. We took the opportunity to run an ad in there that tells people, if you fly into Pensacola Airport versus Mobile, you'll be able to get to the beach a lot faster, which is really why people are coming in the beginning.
So you want to save money on travel? Well, you might ask for a ride to the airport from a friend. Four out of seven friends will listen to 80's rock ballads on the way there. One out of four will want to relive their glory days of playing in a band, leaving you without a ride when you get back. Don't worry, at Pensacola International Airport, we have more destinations, more low fare flights, and more affordable parking, so you can drive yourself and listen to whatever music you want. Fly easy, fly Pensacola.
So again, example of a new TV spot, may have seen that, it started about a month ago and is playing throughout the month. Beauty of this concept and the way that this was done through animation is that this can be updated very easily without spending a lot of money. We're actually, you'll see really in the next couple of days, a holiday version of the spot that's tagged, basically reminding locals to let them know, again, if you're going to fly out for the holidays to go to relatives or friends, fly through Pensacola, not one of the other regional airports, and/or if you have friends or family that are coming into town, make sure you remind them to fly into Pensacola because they can get back to where they're getting, where they came from much quicker. John?
Good afternoon. I'm John Nicholas, Director of Media Activation. Really don't have time to talk, to walk through all of the media plans that we have, you know, in store for the city of Pensacola and all the various entities. But what we do want to do is let you know that we recognize that the creative that you saw is really half the battle. I mean, the other half is making sure we activate it correctly. We are in front of the right people at the right time, in the right instances, utilizing the most targeted, cost-effective, efficient media possible. And what you see up here is just a sampling of tools that we utilize to make sure that we ensure that every decision we make will cause, you know, will have us have the most cost-effective media plans possible. And these are tools that we've already used since we became your partner to enhance the plans that you have done previously to make sure that the efficiency is there. And so, you know, we have that at our disposal. The next slide, we'll also talk about, on the back end, when the website that Richard described is fully activated, we have a suite of these tools that are analytic tools. And basically, what they're going to do is, they're going to make sure that everything that goes to the website is analyzed and make sure that everything that we do is brought back to a higher ROI for the city and the use of your funds.
So again, one of the biggest components of this is, advertising in general is not the best way to brand. It's a component of the branding, but telling your story, Richard said it, and we saw it through everything we did, is, you have an amazing story here, period. We don't have to, a lot of times, brands come to us, and we've got to create a story. We really have to start from scratch and make them into something. You have an amazing story here. Not only from a work, live, play, every angle that we want to take, you have something here that the story just hasn't been told. One of the best ways to tell that story is through PR. Advertising can only project so much, and you can only spend so money, and you shouldn't spend a lot of money from an advertising perspective. So we're trying to keep that contained and let PR take as much of the responsibility as we can to make sure we're infiltrating all the type of media that we want. You can go ahead and put all those up, Richard. So why don't you just hand me the thing so that he can catch up with me? To date, we've already had, do you want to find mine, just real quick? To date, we already have had a 10.1 return on investment. So the dollars you have spent with us in public relations, we've already given you 10 times back in earned media. So we've had half a million dollars of total media value, and we'll take that through. That's part of our job and responsibility. I think some of the things you've done in the past, you had $10, you spent $10. Our job is, if you're going to spend $10, we're going to make sure you get $100 worth. And that's a very, very important component of what we do. So today, you've already got half a million dollars' worth of media impressions. We're going to take you through some of that. First and foremost, yeah, you'll just get that, Megan, we did a local brand launch. You can go to the next thing, Richard. The fact of the matter is, yes, the local community is not your core of who you want to do, but guess what? If we're not inspiring the local community, if they don't understand where we're trying to go, if they aren't excited about it, and the restaurants, the downtown improvement people, not only the people at Energy and the airport and every dance, but everybody in your community isn't excited about it, then they're wasting our time. Because they have to be the first one. We do so much branding and marketing for other communities, and what's shameful is, people will say, well, why would you want to live there? And if the answer is, I don't know why, I was kind of born and raised here, and that's why I live here, then that's a problem. You know, it's a good thing, but it's a problem if they can't tell the story besides the fact that, ah, I don't know, I just happen to live here. We want everybody to be able to tell the same stories that we're going to put on the websites, the same stories that we're telling the media. So the launch event wasn't self-serving. The launch event was to let everybody in on the story. So if you look at it, in television exposure, we had $40,000. We're going to show that in one second. In print, it was there, but then we went out and Associated Press ran your story, Bloomberg ran your story, Reuters ran your story. You had over 152 million impressions about where the city of Pensacola is going and what you're doing with some of your branding. Well, we took some of the local media and just tightened it into a 30-second clip, so we're going to show you that just real quick.
City officials are calling it the upside of Florida. Same flavor, new attitude. This is Pensacola's new image.
It is all about jobs, and we have to go after the competition. People are going to know where we are now, and that's our main goal.
To do that, the city unveiled a new logo and branding proclaiming Pensacola as the best part of Florida.
Pensacola, the upside of Florida. That's the new slogan the mayor unveiled, all part of a marketing strategy for the city.
I think it's a great slogan that's representative of all the great change that's happening in Pensacola right now.
Again, local is important because you've got, and local will continue to be important. We won't put a ton of effort into it, but it's important that once a quarter, that we're not only talking back to our community and our business owners and our business innovators, but that we continue to use those on an ongoing basis. So again, from an editorial perspective, we have three different ways that we do it. Executive interviews, broadcast features, and media experiences. So let's take a look at what some of those have been. Again, we have already conducted interviews. Some of them have come out, some of them have not come out yet, but with CNN Money, we've done one-on-one interviews with Reuters, Air Trans Magazine Go, et cetera, those just give you an example, and some of the target markets like Birmingham Magazine and the Business Review in Sarasota, and the Observer down in the same county in that area. So again, telling our story over and over again, it doesn't come from us. We're the ones that get the entry into it. We're the ones that have the dynamics, we're the different editors, but at the end of the day, you're the one that want to do it. So I'm just going to get Jen, and they're going to hand out a couple of these. Let me hold one up real quick.
Jen, let me just have one for a second. You can go to the next thing.
This is the kind of story that we want, okay? Sarasota is one of your biggest competitors, and we're passing this around, and we have a PDF of this. There is a two-page article just about how Pensacola is kind of kicking Sarasota's behind in economic development. It has charts, it has graphs, it is the cover of the entire Business Review. Now let me help you. The people in Sarasota aren't that happy about it.
Here you go.
But the fact of the matter is, from a PR perspective, it's articles, you can go to the next one, Richard, it's articles like this that we want to get written all the time. So we went head-to-head in a community where we already knew that you have, that we have companies that have, just keep it right there, that we have companies that could come back, come and relocate to here. We are going to hit every single city that we want to. This is not advertising. You did not pay a dime in placement. This was all earned media. We didn't buy an ad and got a story. This was strictly us going and getting publicity for you. So again, it's the dynamic, and again, you could never say all of this in an ad. So it's nice that they're able to tell our story. Again, if you look on the right-hand side, there's two different ones that we're passing around, but they even do their own charts and graphs and comparisons. We challenge some of your competitors to run stories in their business journals throughout Alabama, Mississippi, even up in the Cincinnati area, Boston area, they all have a propensity to relocate, especially after the last three years to this community. And we want to make sure we're telling that story. Go ahead. And that's just a different one, again, with your great thing in the background, which is awesome. And again, it tells us exactly what we want. And then this was the snapshot of Sarasota versus Pensacola. Again, every single market we want to try to hit. You want to go to the next one? And again, that was the Reuters story. So again, yes, we've been working on branding, but we've kind of been working in tandem while we've been doing branding, and the branding continues. We've also gone ahead and been pushing forward with editorial and promotional side. Media experiences. Journalists these days want to come and see it to believe it. So we've had Birmingham Magazine come, and they're going to be writing a story about it. Tampa Bay Metro Magazine has already come. Again, this is not tourism, this is about economic development. Now, we purposely went after Birmingham, again, on the parent's side, because the mom has to believe that this is a great place. Then, I'm not saying, hey, I'm a business owner, so it isn't that the father's owner's the one working and the mom's the one that's standing at home, but there are a lot of publications like Birmingham, Parade, and Atlanta Moms on the move, that we want to make sure we're remembering work, live, play. You can convince the people to come here and move their companies here, but they also have to know that this is a fabulous place to live, that it really is a fabulous place to live. So we're telling a dual story at all times. And this was just, and it goes on, you can just flip through these, Richard. It actually, the one in Atlanta already did, I think, how many different ones? Four? They've done four different series already about what a great place it is in Pensacola and all the features here and what there is to do. We've already worked with the Travel Channel. We work with Anderson Cooper and Katie Couric, and the nightly news, and all the different morning shows, and the day show constantly. So we're already working with all of them to try to do something specific to economic development in Pensacola. We've actually already had the mayor interview with Travel Channel. When that does hit, it's about a $78,000 media value, and they'll usually run it at least a minimum of five times. And he is going to, the whole angle that we took with that, because again, it's the Travel Channel, we didn't want it to be straight tourism, we talked about the events and the livelihood and how all the different companies get involved in the events that are held throughout Pensacola. So there's a way for them to tell their story without having to spend their own money a lot of the times. And that's what the angle is with the Travel Channel, and it's supposed to come out right at the beginning of 2013. On top of that, we like to layer both editorial and promotional, okay? And again, this is still all in PR. We're not physically purchasing the stuff that you have seen. So let's take a look at what some of those other things look like. So let's take a look at what some of those other things look like. From the broadcast merchandising perspective, we've already hit six different of your key markets, and we've had $265,000 worth of radio promotions that you did not give that radio station a dime. You didn't pay for advertising, and you didn't pay for the promotion. We went and negotiated, and you have fabulous partners throughout Pensacola. So thank you, thank you to every hotel, every restaurant, everybody that we've had to convince to give away things for free to make sure we could have that experience. But again, we've had over 1,500 radio spots without you physically giving them a dime. And I think we have one, don't we, Jen? Does that come up next for you to listen to? Or maybe it's right after this.
W D U FM, which we call VDU, W N O E FM, 101.1 New Orleans Coffee Station, W R N O FM, very successful station News Talk, and W Q U E FM are giving listeners a chance to win a trip to beautiful Pensacola, Florida. Now, for two weeks, each station will be offering listeners a chance to win a different experience in Pensacola for some sudden fun. Listen in for the next two months. We, along with our sister stations, are giving away a different experience to enjoy in Pensacola with activities ranging from history and arts, culture to culinary. And Waterfront Pensacola has it all. Indeed it does. Everything that's great about Florida is veteran Pensacola. Visit citia.pensacola.com.
Okay. If you didn't know, that was on behalf of Pensacola. You were paying good attention. I don't think they could have said it a little more times. So again, it's part of layering. It's very important that we don't just say we're just going to tell the economic development story. Again, we also have to be projecting yourself as a great place, that your family is going to want to live and come. Some other things, if you want to just go back to the main logo, Richard, some other things that we're doing is you have some amazing homegrown businesses here. You know, you have your Winphopicons, and you have your different Four Winds Fine Wine and Food. And the fact of the matter is, we want to make sure we're using them as case studies. We want to help them be the voice. Yes, they're homegrown. They relocate here, but we want a packaging program that we try to encourage all the different homegrown entities to actually put grown in Pensacola or whatever line we decide to use on all their packaging. So when people see it, when they see their websites, they're like, wow, they must really get good support here. You also have different kind of VIP visionaries that we're talking about, visionaries introducing Pensacola. And Richard had mentioned that we will have some of these vignettes on the website, but Quint is in there, and Katie Mixon, you know, even though she doesn't have a business, you know, she can take a high profile and call here from a good business perspective. We want to make sure we're using your superstars to project to other people that they were able to come here and have great, successful businesses here. So that's part of that storytelling. We're working with Southern Living on a story right now. We're working actually with Coastal Living on a story right now that all goes back to economic development. And then we also want to do a program called Industry Idols, and certainly, I can attest to Andrews Institute. My cousin happens to be a starting pitcher for one of the major league baseball teams, and he was here all last week getting a show to work on. You have athletes from everywhere coming to Andrews. Incredible athletes coming to Andrews because it's trusted. Does that mean you're going to get another healthcare industry provider or somebody else in sports medicine to come here because that? No, but because there's a story there, we need to be using all of those stories as an example that you embrace and that you really bring corporate entities to mind and are easy to work with. There's an awful lot of communities out there that get slammed because they're not easy. But this whole branding process is why Charlotte is successful. It's why Austin is successful. It's why so many of these communities that 10 years ago, you weren't really sure that they were about, and now you can very much define who they are. So again, that was in a very quick snapshot, and hopefully that gave you an idea of some of the things. Come and sit through a three- or four-hour presentation, we'd be happy to get it, but in about 15 minutes, that gave you a snapshot of the type of things that we're working on. And I'm sure you have some questions. Roll back into place, gentlemen.
During the course of your going around, do you intend to try to incorporate any of our larger employers, i.e. like healthcare, Sacred Heart, Baptist, our educational system? Is that incorporated in your display?
Absolutely. You know, we're just in the first few months, so we have a whole list of stories that, and we even brought up Baptist and education, and then all of those are important storylines. You know, we just can't do them all at once. You know, because there's different layers for all of those from a PR perspective. We would never go and advertise in all of the different entities, like the magazines, but we can tell the PR story in those magazines. It's because education is a benefit. Your port is a benefit. What you do at sports is a benefit. So we've tried to identify every single one of those, and one at a time, you know, we're going to kind of roll out different stories along that way, but absolutely.
Okay. As a follow-on to that, do you feel that those entities would be able to help fund some of this effort, i.e. Sacred Heart, Baptist, School Board, the rest of them? Would they come into the pot and put some money into that?
I don't know, but I want to be there when you ask the school board to do it. I'm not being sarcastic. I don't know. You know, I think there's a big difference between what the school board might do and what Sacred Heart might do. Truthfully, what we've done in the past is like a couple of years down the road, when you suddenly have 100 times more people coming to your website, suddenly, you can start getting advertising revenue, for instance, on your website from those entities. So they want to be challenged. Right now, it's in so much infancy, we don't really have a lot that they would want to buy. You know, but I think as it becomes more successful, then companies start recognizing it and saying, hey, instead of spending my advertising dollars somewhere else, I might want to advertise on your own website, so it does start paying for itself to some degree. But right now, it's a little premature.
I guess my final comment, in the past, we've had some deficiency in terms of really characterizing and showing all of Pensacola. I would hope that we will have some diversity and show all of our population how all of us can relax and have a good time on the beach, et cetera. Your animated is good, but we want to see some children flocking around on the beach and in fact, show all of our diversity. So I would hope that would be in your plans.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And I do think that's a benefit that, like we said, you already have the story. Our job is just to share it. So I think you already have a good diversity that's here, and we have to make sure we have a responsibility to project that.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, I was wondering, one thing that's interesting to me is that how do y'all work with the Pensacola Chamber of Commerce? We have a real active chamber here, and I noticed about the same time that we came up with our new branding, that they had come up with their own logo also, and it was the arrows. And we talk about confusion. I know you talked about confusion at the very beginning of this presentation. I'm a little confused of why we didn't somehow mesh those efforts together. Could you expand on that, please?
I don't know that I have 100% of the answer on that, but the fact of the matter is you do have a tourism entity in Visit Pensacola, and you do have a chamber entity, and you do have this entity, and everybody is still, again, because it's new, still a little bit doing their own thing. You know, economic development is much more aligned with chamber than with Visit Pensacola because that's truly tourism, although that is a component of this. I don't have the answer to that question, but I think you're right. I mean, that needs to be a direction. It's been difficult for a lot of cities to do. It's been very difficult for a lot of cities to pull off, quite frankly, because a lot of times, the chamber feels like their biggest responsibility is to their own chamber members locally, you know, the membership within the chamber, whereas our emphasis is not at all in, I mean, we want to use local community, but ours is outward pulling it in opposed to making sure we're doing things for the local community. Does that, within the community, does that make sense?
To me, it's just, excuse me, I didn't mean to talk over you, but it just seems to me it would have been more effective if we all were on the same page. I know Montgomery, Alabama, I believe that they are all on the same page.
Yes, they are.
And, you know, I have a special friend that lives there, and it seems to work real well there, and they were able to do that. I just can't understand why we have two different efforts, which we talk about confusion. I'm confused a little bit of why that didn't happen together. And I still don't really have a satisfactory answer from you. I mean, are we going to?
I don't have a satisfactory answer.
Yeah, are we going to move in that direction to try to get some kind of togetherness there?
Yeah, I think we would love to obviously have this as a one-coordinated effort. In fact, I'm probably attending a meeting tomorrow that was discussed earlier about a specially grant, BP, a specially grant fund that could potentially be used for various aspects, including the Viva Florida 2013 celebration. That may cover everybody. Visit Pensacola, the chamber, and then obviously what we're doing from an economic development standpoint. I think tomorrow's meeting is a good example of how it can work together. And again, we're going to be attending that meeting, and hopefully, something, good things will come out of that that will lead to more of a choreographed effort, and everybody's going to go down the same path. As far as why it hasn't happened up to this point, can I answer that question for you?
Yeah, well, I would encourage that. I just, you know, it's disappointing to me. And I would just encourage any efforts to try to get this, everybody on the same page, I think would make us more successful.
I agree.
And so, any effort in that regard, I would appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and Councilman Johnson certainly appreciate your comments. I think that this is a multi-step process, and the first part of it is getting our own house in order. You know, the city itself never had an identity. It had multiple identities. And so what we're doing is to bringing all of those entities together under that umbrella that is the city of Pensacola. Now, when we look at the future and we see the results and we see the effectiveness of it, then I think that we have an opportunity to then reach out and say, this is what we've been able to accomplish. These are the results that we've had, you know, and from my brief time here, it's clear that this city doesn't always play nice together. And maybe it needs this. It needs some kind of an effective program that then we can show that there are some actual results to be garnered from it, and then, you know, invite others to become a part of it. It's a multi-step process, though.
And thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I appreciate that. But would, let's rewind for a second. Did we ask them, or do we just go out on our own and just hire this agency? I mean, we include them in the initial discussions with this? I mean, were they included, or we just on our own just went out and hired these and never even considered the chamber? I mean, I'm a little confused there, too, so help me there.
First of all, there are some similarities in the branding. If you look at the shading of the different color schemes, you know, that kind of does come together. But to answer your question is, is that, you know, by that, I believe at that point, and that was before I was here, but I believe at that point, from what I understand, that the chamber had already been well-involved in their process prior to us making the decision to move forward. But I can certainly get more information and find out exactly what the timeline is.
And I appreciate that you came in a little bit late, and, you know, it just, to me, it just would have made a lot more sense if everybody would got on the same page. But I'm being redundant now, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few questions and some comments.
Perfect.
Well, you haven't heard what I have to say yet.
No, it's perfect that you've got questions. Bring them on.
Thank you. Where is Pensacola? Do you know where Pensacola's core business district is?
I think it depends on what kind of business it is.
Okay. Let's say commercial.
Well, if it's maritime-oriented, it comes into the port. I mean, again, it depends on whether it's warehousing and it's by trains, so it really depends on which entity it is that you're trying to affect.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is Pensacola's core business district is what's referred to in our comprehensive plan as Uptown Pensacola.
Right.
If you look at our comprehensive plan, starting on page 57 to page 173, Uptown is mentioned numerous times. That's the area where our airport is. We have a state college there that has 10,000 students. We have a major employer there that hires 1,000 employees, that Sacred Heart Health System. We have the best mall anywhere, from Destin to Mobile. That is a prime destination, especially for the military, young men and women. So I guess in this small, compact area, we have all of this tremendous growth. When I see this article here, I think I'm offended by it.
Okay.
And number one, it implies something that isn't true. Most of the economic development we've seen has occurred in Uptown without one dime of government subsidies, other than the airport. I mean, it's an economic engine that doesn't quit. Now, when I see this article, this article here, it's clear to me that this is about promoting one person. And when I read this byline here, punchline no more, "The city of Pensacola altered its governing structure in 2009," which I very much supported, "after a tumultuous and somewhat leaderless decade. Now the city thrives under a strong mayor." Reason I'm offended by that, as I look around this table here, and the people who this is referring to are sitting around these tables, these were the leaders under our previous form of government, which by the way, has not even been in existence a full two years. These individuals put that park across the street. That doesn't say lack of leadership to me. These people on this council here created the revitalization in downtown Pensacola. This revitalization didn't start two years ago. It's been a process that's been going on for quite some time under this leader, this leader, this leader, this leader, that leader over there, Mr. Hall, who isn't here, and that councilman over there, Larry Johnson.
Mr. Councilman Myers.
I'm just saying, I don't like the images that are being projected.
Understand, and I don't think they are utterly responsible for that, and I think it's what it is as it relates to that. I'm offended by it, too, but I don't think that we will get anything productive by accusing these folks. They're here to show what they plan to do as related to that.
Well, please.
So if we could, you know, keep a.
Okay. Let me finish.
That I appreciate.
Let me finish. We're paying them a lot of money to brand Pensacola, to tell Pensacola's story, and they're proud of this story here. I'm not. And I think that we need more inclusion in this process of branding and telling our story. Quite frankly, I have received a lot of complaints from citizens regarding the slogan "upside of Florida." People don't understand what it means, and it has a negative connotation to some people. People feel like they've been left out of the process. People are concerned that their city of five-flag image is gone, that people, that the community has not been included. And I think I would like to see a story that's really and truly more reflective, number one, of the truth and how our community feels at large.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think Councilman Spencer had his hand up first.
Hard to follow that gusto. But I do want to share that I thought today's presentation was extremely educational and enlightening for me, and I consider myself to be someone that I thought I was on the leading edge of understanding public relations. So I appreciated the succinct and thorough education about your world that is a much deeper and more complex world beyond advertising. And I was impressed with the penetration into some of the communities, the cities, the periodicals, that where Pensacola was represented, not in the sort of the paid-for soundbite or visual. That was impressive. And Councilwoman Myers is, I consider her to be a comrade, and we are often involved in spirited debate, and we'll go toe-to-toe all the time, as you know, when it comes to my zeal for the unique qualities of the city as opposed to being blindfolded and spun around 360 degrees in a suburban mall parking lot and saying, guess what city you're in. So I'll always be a little bit biased to the parts of our community that are uniquely Pensacola, and I am, will always be bullish about featuring those and framing, again, those parts of Pensacola that no one can replicate. Finally, the, I love the small town with a big future. I'm from this small town, and I feel like I'm living the big future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'd like to thank the Zimmerman Agency team for making the trip over from Tallahassee and putting together this presentation on such short notice. I appreciate your efforts today. And, you know, a great deal of my concern that I brought up on last Thursday, or actually last Wednesday night during our budget hearing, had a little bit to do with the presentation that you gave, some of the risk-taking that you said you would do because it is something that has never been done before, and CEO branding was mentioned, and that the mayor is the brand, and that was a great concern to me. But I did have a few questions for you, and then I have some comments for counsel that I don't expect you to answer. I'm not going to put you on the spot like that. So I did want to know, though, because it was mentioned in the presentation, one of the most important parts would be local support, and in the presentation, there was a local person to be involved, and as I understand from a records request, they are no longer involved. And that was one of your main, I think there were eight points that you made at the end of your presentation. So is there someone local that is coordinating and is your ground support that you said was so critical?
Well, it was never a local person that lived here. It was just the fact that we have different people that went to school here. Jill, for instance, went to school here. They were never going to be here full-time, just to make sure that.
Well, Ms. Birdwell sat in on your presentation and was to be the local, the ground support that I believe in the presentation you pointed to her.
I don't know who.
Okay, but, well, okay, then maybe it was a different presentation from a different Zimmerman Agency, but local ground support was important. It was one of your eight key points. So I'm just trying to find out if you have someone from Zimmerman Agency that is in Pensacola doing.
No, we don't have a full-time person here.
Okay. And then another concern was the cost. I know you had a previous contract with Okaloosa County TDC, and the total cost per month was $25,000, and that was an entire county's tourism efforts. And we are a small city of 52,000 people, and we are paying considerably more on a monthly basis. And I'm trying to understand the economies of scale there. And I'm trying to understand the economies of scale there, or this return on investment that you're talking about. Why is the city of Pensacola being charged so much more?
Yeah. It's a little bit, we can probably get your document better than we can explain it, but the fact of the matter is, that was a base fee that they paid. So every time we placed media, we got a commission. Every time, in other words, by the time it was all said and done, it was a lot more than what that fee was. So our creative got charged, our PR got charged, everything was on top of that fee. So it's not really...
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Yeah, yours is all inclusive of everything. So, yeah, we don't have to commission anything, we don't charge creative, everything is included in yours. Whereas Okaloosa County's was 100% different setup.
Okay. And then I know that there is an RFP in the Okaloosa County, the TDC just closed. Did you respond to that, to work for the Okaloosa County TDC?
Yes, for tourism.
Okay. And I'm greatly concerned about that, and I'm not going to state any more about that with you. I just will talk with council about that. So I'm not directing my comments at you.
Okay.
I'm just going to discuss it with council. My concern there, to call it tourism or to call it economic development, tourism is economic development, economic development has tourism involved in it. And to have someone that close in proximity to us, that the Zimmerman Agency is marketing as well, I feel is in direct competition with us. It would be like having Coca-Cola and the Pepsi account, or the Budweiser account and the Miller account, Burger King and McDonald's. It just doesn't make sense that we are paying on a monthly basis to be the upside of Pensacola, and then right next door, the same agency is marketing Okaloosa, saying, "Come see us." I realize a lot of it is the storytellers and the business that we're trying to attract, but when you look at the website, it's the "fly to" information, it's the vans on the beach, it's all wrapped into one. And that is a great concern for me. And some of the things that I brought up to council last Wednesday that I do want to make sure you understand, one of the things was this issue in Okaloosa County. It's an active investigation, and that's why I'm not questioning you directly, because I don't know.
Why don't you all sit down? It seems like this is going to be a little...
What I meant is that I'm... No problem. We're right here for the next one that asks, has a question.
Sit at the table here.
And it was the yacht purchase, and I actually have obtained that from the newspaper over there. And it's a great concern to me, the controls, the county controls and procedures that we have in place, and that something like that cannot happen here, because that was, all of this came to light after the contract that we had signed by the mayor on March 1st. This happened in May. That, you know, a yacht was part of a branding campaign over there for tourism, so they bought a $710,000 yacht, ironically became direct competition with someone they could have called up and said, "Hey, do you have a boat that you could donate a weekend to, or could we pay for that weekend?" That is part of this. So I'm not sure what that focus was, and I don't know what the approval process is going to be for future marketing endeavors, that we would need to put that in place as council, or see it put in place as a recommendation from staff. And again, is this appropriate use of our taxpayer dollars, that we have a CEO branding program on our website for Mayor Hayward? Actually, in the second paragraph, it says, "The mayor also serves in an unofficial capacity in guiding local economic development initiatives, leading legislative advocacy efforts, and speaking with other elected officials." So this is not an official capacity that the mayor serves in, yet we have ended up with these, the branding campaign and this cost on a monthly basis, and the annual contract that we're doing. And we have paid professionals and the entire, I can't say entire, but the private sector that has invested in 2015 at the Chamber, that is ready to go engage in economic development. And we're not even in sync with that agency. And then we have the tourism agency that's not a part of this either. So I'm concerned about the dollars being spent, the alignment with others in our community, the return on investment that is so vital to the success of this. And, you know, those are my concerns. And I don't know that they'll be resolved here today. There's a great deal of information that I would still like to have on how the choices were made. One of the parts of the presentation was how important it was to market our enterprise operations, but not a single department head for those enterprises was at the presentations. And I don't know if they were consulted with the video later on to have some input into the enterprises that they're responsible for. It appears this is an economic development effort for CEO branding, and that that's what was sold and bought by the mayor. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First, a comment to Councilman Spencer and Councilwoman Myers. I too love downtown, the unique aspect, but I will tell you that when my husband's extended family comes down here and stay at the beach, they want to get to that mall and go shoe shopping. And so there's room for all of us here. So, anyway, first, I want to say that it seems you guys have been hard at work, lots of product placement. You know, the campaign's very modern, sleek, Madison Avenue, it's very professional. But my problem is, I don't see much of Palafax Street in it. You know, we're a unique community with a lot of assets, and my first question is, why do we need to build ourselves up by putting others down? And I think about Dr. Wu going to Florida League meetings and having to face colleagues, and, you know, I just think we're better than that. We have enough that we can frown about our city. The wave, I think we've all heard comments about that, you know, it's a centerpiece of this new logo, and, but we're not just a beach town. And ultimately, I don't know about you guys, but when I think of waves in the city of Pensacola, I think of hurricanes. And that's not a good association for me. I don't think it's a good one for many in this community. One of the things that has bothered me is, in the big branding shindig, one of the big ideas that was put forward was putting logos on the water towers. I don't think many of you know that there was no permission or pricing gotten from ECUA at that point, and that idea would cost half a million dollars. And so, you know, someone didn't do their homework on that. The presentation included that this campaign is not really about the local community, but the local community, the citizens and city of Pensacola is our core. And, you know, I go to the Facebook page with posts about vans on the beach, but nothing about evenings in Old Seville, or the Twitter exchange about oyster restaurants, but no mention of our local asset, our city assets with oyster restaurants. You know, we saw that TV ad. I don't know if any of you have taken a close look at it, but it seems that whoever made that doesn't quite know where Pensacola is. If you look at the map, we're sort of not the upside of Florida, but the downside of Alabama Mississippi. And that concerns me, that they wouldn't have been able to find that. I'm glad to hear it's editable, and I hope you will quickly fix that error.
It's actually already, it was already fixed, actually. And it really was, we looked at it again this morning when the subject came up, I think. It was about a quarter of an inch probably west of, you could argue where it was. It's actually a very big circle on that map, but it has been shifted over, and it's already been, that's already been...
Well, for those of us who know where Pensacola is without an issue, that was sort of surprising. You know, I'm going to tag on to what many of you have said, you know, why are city taxpayers spending money to duplicate the efforts of visit Pensacola, the TDC, or the Chamber's recruitment efforts? You know, these things should be a regional effort. And, you know, going our own way is not really a good way to play nice. It's, I think, important for us to work with the other stakeholders in this community, to promote this community as a whole. We can't stand alone, and they can't stand alone. It should be a team effort and not just about the city of Pensacola supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I'd like to thank the Zimmerman team for being here this afternoon, because today you're hearing some things that you need to hear. And I'm, in some circles, considered a person with many words. And then there are opportunities when few words become appropriate. And from what I'm hearing, we have a marketing mess. We have a serious disconnect, because we invest money in the other agencies, the TDC, the Chamber, and others. And what I'm hearing here this afternoon is just a mess. I'm deeply insulted by the article. I've been on this council for the past 12 years, and I don't like being referred to as being a part of a leader-less city. It was this council who asked and got in place a review of the charter in the first place, because we saw what the needs were, and we addressed them. And now we are in a situation where we are adjusting to a new charter, to a new form of government. That's one point. So we have a mess on our hands, and it's going to require all of the players to come to the table and identify their, effect their roles. What are you going to do to solve the mess? A few years ago, when we were working with a consultant who had provided us with a review of what was going on in the city of Pensacola, I had a specific question. And in that question, I named the players, and I asked the consultants at that time to give me some feedback on their experience in dealing with cities who had multiple players, all attempting to play the same game. And as I recall, the gentleman, before he answered, he swallowed, he looked around the room, and he simply stated, "It's problematic." And essentially, that's what we have here. Now, to switch gears, I believe it was either '07 or '08, when the former group that was attempting to do partially what you're doing to market the city of Pensacola, they did a video that included African-American representation in about four to five seconds. And as I look at the staff, and I looked at your presentation today, it appears to be moving along in the same track, as if we are not here, that we don't exist. And many of, some of you may attest to the fact that we had our 100-year celebration, our fraternity did, and we invited people from all over the country to spend a four-day weekend in the city of Pensacola. A black fraternity, by the way. And I think they left about $3 million here in a four-day period. But what I don't see is your ability to reach out into the African-American marketing community to let people know, and I don't know if you have the proper vehicle, and I doubt if you will unless you have that African-American involvement, just not in the pictures and so forth. But you're going to have to go, and I don't think you know the hood, as we do, to put it bluntly. So you're going to need the assistance of African-American magazines and marketers who will help you identify those areas. And to me, it's really not a color thing, it's a money thing. And if people are in a position to come here and spend money, then they need to know that the city of Pensacola and its nice beaches and et cetera, et cetera, actually exist. How do you plan to reach out to that market without including certain individuals who are more familiar with it? And later after this meeting, I have a recommendation that I'll get with you folks and make, but we have to have the ability to reach out to all markets across the board. And to conclude my comments at this time, we all have to look back, and when you pick up a newspaper, we know what writers do. Sometimes they write information when they have no clue. Sometime they put their propaganda and the slant on it to play a game. And it always has, to me, subliminal messages that are going in multiple directions. I know what they're doing. I've been reading newspapers for a little over 60 years. So I know the process and what articles have a tendency to do. It has a direct attention, but the writer of that article has no clue as to what's going on in the city of Pensacola, and you can tell that by the article. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Any other comments, or comments? Audience? Mr. Mr.? Back in there, Mr. Duson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and Council. You knew, you knew that I could not resist coming up here at this presentation. I came to this meeting specifically for this presentation, and just so the Zimmerman Agency knows, I am a former city councilwoman, and I am a, have a small local advertising agency, so I understand the business on a much smaller scale, of course. I want to say some complimentary things. First of all, certainly, I think the city benefits, and I'm impressed by the depth of the public relations contacts and the depth of what the agency here has accomplished. Certainly, I, you know, certainly better-looking than what I've seen a little bit of in terms of the actual hardcore advertising creative that I've seen today. And, you know, kind of piggybacking on what Councilwoman Myers and Councilman Gerald said in terms of the content of the one article that Councilwoman Myers showed me, I don't fault the Zimmerman Agency for that. And I think we all understand, with, I don't mean to be insulting, but let me bring up, I sometimes talk in cliches, garbage in, garbage out. You know, they worked with what they were given by a click, okay? And we know there has been a click here, period. And it's got to go beyond that. So I hope that we will get beyond this to tell a more inclusive, diverse, culturally-rich story, and stop beating up on people, okay? There's no need to, you know, just as Dr. Pratt said, there's no need to beat up on other parts of Florida to make ourselves look good. There is no need to beat up on people in this community who have given a lot in order to make one person look good, okay? And finally, if it, you know, if this agency, I would like, you know, a little message to the agency, I would recommend two pieces of reading, because it's very obvious that the great, you know, the great depth and breadth of their experience is in the corporate world. Cities are not corporations, cities are not corporate entities. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I would recommend to you two very easy reads, but I think that they may help you see the heart, soul, and spirit of what cities are. Number one would be the book For the Love of Cities by Peter Kagayama, and the other, The Seamless City by former St. Pete Mayor Rick Baker. I think there's a lot to be learned about cities and their genuine spirit from those two books. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duson.
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to say hello to the Zimmerman Agency again. I believe I heard your presentation when you folks presented to the Chamber, when Chamber was looking for its representation. Unfortunately, I was unable to view your city presentation, because that was a closed session. And at the time that that particular review was going on, there was a lot of community angst about exactly which direction we were going. I compliment you on the quality of your work, and you certainly have gotten a lot of bang for the bucks so far. And I just appreciate all of council's comments. You've all raised issues which many citizens have been dialoguing about, from the moment the new logo was rolled out, to the disappointment of some people that a heritage was being lost in the idea of creating a new contemporary image, to the very fact that we are a bay community, we are not a beachfront city. We may be part of a larger beach community, but we are a maritime wharf, port, solid land community, and that does not get translated with the current logo. And a lot of citizens have repeatedly brought that up in conversation. Piggybacking on what Ms., from the Councilwoman Mac said, this is a city of neighborhoods. Besides the many successful businesses, we have some of the most diverse and richest historical neighborhoods, contemporary neighborhoods, and ever-changing neighborhoods in the entire nation. We run the gamut of ages of incomes and of talented citizens. And I don't see that so far in any of the publicity that you have shared with us. And I would hope that you could focus on that, and you might begin by attending the council neighborhood president meetings and having some input from real residents of Pensacola, as opposed to people who visit Pensacola, and maybe even have one of your local connections work with the neighborhoods, so that you can understand where the pride of Pensacola and why people have moved to Pensacola could be reflected. I understand that you're going after... I understand that you're going after the new development, and you see a certain image that you believe will sell Pensacola, but I think what the citizens of Pensacola are concerned about is that you may be repackaging Pensacola to be something, and you may be losing Pensacola in the process. And we love Pensacola as it is and are proud of it as it is. So I would encourage you to re-explore what Pensacola is, but again, the quality of what you're doing is exceptional. And counsel, I appreciate your honesty and bringing your true feelings forward to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DuWesong, our counsel. I think we need to wrap this up.
Can I say something?
You know, we have our budget meeting Wednesday, and I would suggest to you that if you have some specifics as relate to this, that I would hope that you will call Mr. Reynolds and see if you can get some clarification, because then that's when we're going to, I suspect, going to finalize this particular action. So I want to express appreciation, okay, to the Zimmerman Agency and the Zimmerman for you coming and giving your presentation.
Can I say one thing?
And then I'm going to let you say what you like, please.
First, I would like to let the Zimmerman Agency know that I am very impressed with your professionalism and the quality of your work. And my comments should not reflect in any way on your capabilities. And I realize that my problem is not with you, okay? And I just want you to understand that, that I hope you didn't take my comments personal, because you do very good work. Also, I wanted to assure Councilman Spencer that I love historic neighborhoods. The neighborhood I live in right now is the youngest neighborhood I've ever lived in. I've always lived in historic neighborhoods. I have...
Do y'all want to clear that up later?
Yeah. No, no, because I just... Kissin' me? I won't...
Yeah.
I just want the public to understand that I'm not anti our historic district. I love our historic district, and that's one of the things that makes the city of Pensacola so great and unique.
You cannot rip up that.
I will not.
Ms. Zimmerman?
If I can, first off, thank you very much.
Please talk in the...
And, sorry.
Talk in the...
I've never had anybody say they couldn't hear me. I was actually trying to whisper so I didn't blow your haircuts out.
It wasn't me.
Oh, that's not a problem. The, no, I will not, I promise, begin to address everything that's been said. And more than anything else, honestly, I love, absolutely adore, the passion that everybody has for Pensacola, period. There are too many communities that we do work with, because we do work with a lot of cities, that it is just about, let's be slick, let's not even care who we are, let's create and fabricate something. And hopefully, you heard us repeat that over and over again, is you have something amazing, we just have to do a better job of sharing it. Now, on that note, just like which neighborhood to promote, we will never, you will be the politician of the world if you've ever figured out how to make everybody happy. It won't happen. You know, with destinations that we work with, you get a Wall Street Journal story talking about the amazing culture, and the people that have beach activities, the people that are history are all upset. You know, you're never, especially when it's storytelling, they, no one will tell all the story every time. So we just have to be diligent to make sure the facts are correct, and know that for every time we talk about one entity, there's going to be another story that might talk about architecture, and another story that might talk about sports and et cetera. So we will not serve all kings and gods at one time. I wish we could figure out how to make that happen. There has to be a marriage, though, with keeping the passion and the history and the preservation of who Pensacola is and the promise of who Pensacola can be. And I don't think those have to be two things. They don't have to be two things. I mean, it's not an easy thing to do, but there has to be synergy going forward on where you're going to be 30 years from now and 40 years from now. And it doesn't mean that the passion for your history, the passion for the five flags, the passion for everything that you've been has to go away. It just means that we have to retool it into something that is relevant to a lot of the people today. Because you can continue to attract people, but it has to be continued to attract more than what you've been getting. And I think that's, you know, that's our role and responsibility. It's not easy, but it's hard to do. And someday, we'll talk about the yacht, because we were 100% against that and had nothing to do with it, just so you know, because it drives me nuts. Anyway, thank you very much. Again, we've taken everything you said, we appreciate it, and we just, you know, we've got a job to do, and we want to make sure that we're doing it with everybody's input as much as possible, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, counsel?